Well, let's go ahead and start it and we'll kind of go slow because we know that Director Evans is on the way, on her way. But we'll go ahead and start off this special, you ready? The special board meeting of the Ballistics Water District Board of Directors on Thursday, March 24th, 2016. And Director Ellsworth, would you please lead us in the pledge?
My pleasure. Ready to give. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And can we have a roll call vote, please?
Here. Here? Here.
Here. I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
Don't move, second.
If you have a motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, none, motion passes unanimously. And I do not see any speakers for oral communication. So we will right on to action items. And as you know, we're having tonight's meeting is special to select, to review, discuss, and give some guidance to staff on kind of weeding down the list of bidders that we've received for recruitment firms that will help us select our next general manager. And so if I may suggest, and this will kind of serve two purposes, if we could kind of help organize ourselves. I know that we've all ranked the bidders one through 10, if you will. If we could maybe utilize these whiteboards that we have and each of us can list our, the firms one through 10 as we rank them, and that'll also give us some time for Director Evans to be overdoing this as well.
You say one through 10, I only got nine.
Well, maybe I'm miscounting.
Five, six, seven, eight, nine, thank you.
Hold on.
I counted the list. The matrix list that was sent.
Hi, you're right, Director Hernandez, thank you.
All right. Do you want to leave anybody out?
I'll start or stop if you excuse me for a second. We can, more than one of us can go up there, I guess, at the same time.
Well, while we're waiting, and you can continue to put the names up there, do we want to talk about how many people we would like to interview?
Yeah, I thought we had come to a consensus on that of three to four already, but...
Oh, did we?
I'll write this down and we can come back and then we can talk about it.
All right, go ahead.
Should we all do it? Should we all?
What are you going to do, Mike? You just put the initials across?
Yeah, like, yeah, well, we should try to...
Put the initials across and then let us go underneath each one with our recommendations, one through five. You want me to?
Does that make sense? Everybody so far?
Why don't you just write all nine of them up there and we can check them?
That's my plan.
Yeah, write all nine, write all nine.
Or the other way, Mike. Instead of putting our names up there, put the initials of the individual consultants and then I think what you were saying, wasn't it?
That's good.
Just list all nine of them.
Yeah, all nine, first to last.
Yeah.
Are you putting yours according to how you rate them, just names?
How I rate them.
Okay.
What's wrong with that? And that way, if we're all in agreement on the top three or four, then so be it. We go home.
Search the one half of those or the other. We're having lunch, I can get the peace to next week.
Okay.
And I, although it's only the 29th, maybe this... My concession.
Oh, yeah.
I went out there this weekend. Unless we have a serious day for the next seven days.
We need to make more bets.
What's that?
We need to make more bets.
Yeah, we sure do because I'm way behind. Although it did come, it came up halfway. The water, the rain we had came up halfway. I mean, I was hoping.
Hey, I don't know the ones up north except they let the water out.
Yeah.
If anybody else wants to go, feel free to go. And then what I did is first to nine. So that's how I rate them first.
Okay.
And we don't, we want to do it one at a time, guys. Do you want to go up there?
Well, I gotta wait for Betty anyway, so.
All right.
Jeff, what name are you a consultant from? Let me put that here.
Ah, you're guessing as good as mine. Need some Dixon water.
I just put my top five.
Yeah.
Can we go any further in there?
Yeah. Can I do, do we need to make this clear?
Okay.
Hopefully other people will too, if they need to make it this clear.
So do you think we have a bunch of different opinions on this board?
Well, surprisingly.
It was a surprise, huh?
And we forgot to shut that off. So now that, while we wait for Betty to see her list, then we can have that conversation about, that discussion about how many firms we would like to direct staff to set up interviews for.
Well, I have a question.
Sure.
Just to bounce this off of you guys. If we list them as well that we liked them, if we give them all a number, the first one, five, the second one, four, the third one, three, the fourth one, two, the fifth one, one, and you add those up, I think you'll come up with the winner.
You can do that.
We're just sitting here arguing with each other over why I like this guy more than another guy. Just a lot.
Yeah, I mean, I was just, something...
Was that what?
Something, yeah, if we did it, well...
First place, five points, second place, four points, everybody gets a point up to the top five and then count them up, whether the winner is, the winner is.
Wait a second, if... I'm just checking to see if your methodology works.
It does.
If Murray is one, and CPS is one on mine...
They both get five points, you're right.
Oh, each get five.
And then you would add it to total points.
Yeah, everybody, everybody does the wrong.
Oh, I see, five, 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 five.
Add up the total points and you'll know who you guys are winning.
Add up the total points across and see how that rates.
And if they're done, just that, easy. I don't want to make it too simple for anybody, but...
Yeah, it doesn't give any, you know, I would be curious to ask, and it looks like I'm the only one that's ranked RJ Watkins in the top five. They were probably the only firm I recall that was actually from San Diego. It was, was, was there concerns?
Thirty-five thousand dollars, they were probably eight thousand over.
Yeah, they were the highest bid, I would, yeah, I would agree. They were the highest bid, which was surprising.
I also, I give a lot, I give a lot of points in my version to people that actually spent time bringing these things together. They did.
I agree.
They did the stapler.
Well, in fairness, they only had about 24 hours.
Remember we added him?
Yeah, but I think all the other people had these already.
Yeah, I know, binders are available, yeah.
Now, this one obviously took a little more time to do, but, you know, I thought that was pretty cool. They used our own stuff for it, as a few of them did.
As long as they got permission to do it.
But it was better than stapling.
Okay, yeah, I agree.
And I gave them points off because they did not include in their methodology that they produced a brochure. I thought that was pretty beneficial to...
The ones that did, yes, I agree.
Well, the firms that did, but also to the applicants that went, oh, yeah, look at here, here's a nice brochure about the community and this, that, and the other. So I had negative points for that. But the price...
Yeah, I agree.
Pushed me.
Okay. That'd really be the only question that I would, I would have had. I thought all the firms in general, you know, they were all similar in nature. Other than RJ Watkins, I think everybody was within a, you know, a thousand or two of each other. So the price was not really a big factor as far as differences between the, all the different bids.
And in my situation, the CPS, the Cooperative Personal Services, they were right there with everything, they got the brochure, they were good. I called about some references and the woman just went off about how excellent they were. And...
I called some references on Bob Murray and got some good, some good stuff, too.
One disclaimer I have to make is I did, in my current life, work for an organization that hired Bob Murray and Associates.
It was a city.
It was a city, and we used them. And I will tell you that he did a really fine job, but I want everyone to know that there is a history with me and Bob Murray. I don't want that to be a...
Yeah, I've got, I've got some history with a couple of them. Ralph Anderson and Alliance.
Is any of that an issue, Jeff, or is it just more of a FYI?
I just think that's...
Yeah, it's like, I like the Raiders, or I, you know what I mean, it's not... It doesn't matter, you don't have a financial interest is the only thing that's important. That's, you can have a bias or a prejudice or familiarity, as long as you don't...
Like you're building, but building, you have a bias.
Well, if...
I might have to, I might have to recuse myself.
Yeah, as long as it's not financial.
Well, if you're ready to all of these works, it would be at least something interesting to see what the tally is. And I mean, I've got no other way to do it.
I am, well...
Well, so, again, how, the first one that gets a five, the second gets a four, and then we add it up?
Three, two, one.
And for each company, you add up until...
Yeah, you add it up across.
Yeah, okay. If that works.
I won't go all the way across.
No, you don't have to, yeah, just go right across the top and that, yeah.
So does somebody want to take a...
Well, like Murray's five, two, three, three.
Okay, there you go.
Yeah.
So it's 13.
Equals 13. Then you could take another one that looks like it's up there.
So they got 13.
They got 13, and Watkins has a five.
A four.
Their, 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 zero.
Yeah, they have a five.
Well, what, anybody else got it up there?
No.
Why do they get five?
Oh, they didn't.
They get four.
They got their four, they have a four. No, oh, they got a four, because you have it high. Yeah.
Alliance, did they get a four?
Alliance and Associates, they're down below the four mark, so I got a zero.
I think I have it as four.
Yeah, you got it as five, so there's one there.
One, two, three, four, yeah. And one, two, three, four.
Five, they get a point there.
They got, they got three.
No, I gave them threes, they have five, they have one on one, right?
Yeah.
Four. And there's one, okay.
What about BHI?
BHI, I have them as the lowest score, which is...
No, you have them as a four.
I am four here.
That's a two.
That's a one, I have them as a two, that's three, there aren't any...
Wait a minute, you got, the fourth is number two.
Jim's is a two.
Jim's number, Jim's is a two, okay?
Mine's a two?
Because yours is number four.
Five, four, three, two.
One person do it, Jimbo!
Oh, yeah, five, four, two, this is...
Jim, let one person do it!
I know, I'm just trying to...
No, you're confusing.
He needs to confuse them.
Well, what do you have with that?
I have, I have two.
Two points.
Two points.
All right, and I do two, so the other four.
Yeah.
Nobody else have it?
No.
Now, what about...
Ralph.
What about, no, he got...
Ralph's got some points up there.
Yeah, Ralph has so...
Ralph, yeah.
He gets five.
I got four here. So this one?
That looks like Ralph Anderson and Associates.
Yeah, that's it.
Okay, so...
Hey, I don't feel so bad now, you know?
Five, nine.
Fourteen.
Fourteen, fifteen, yeah.
So they're going to be in the finals. I suspect, you know, I don't have them here, I suspect Chip and Yes is looking pretty good.
Yeah. I mean, you can just keep on going, Avery, just count how many Avery's got.
Just finish it.
Yeah, just go down the line.
Zero, zero, one, two, three, four, two.
Okay.
CPS, zero, three...
Two.
Two's a five.
Oh, that's a three.
Yep.
All right.
Three, three, six, and five's eleven.
Yep.
Cough, zero, so that's four.
I'm down here with Cough, essentially, it's here.
It's a one.
No, it's just, I think the little one's a zero, right?
It's a one, a one.
Oh, what?
What was the other one? I'm hearing so, so four and five.
Oh, this comes up too, too?
Yeah, I'm sure it is.
JR Gray is...
I should have taken an eraser so I could try it.
J U Gray.
So as of right, before, before we get Betty's input, this...
Well, what about Craig Simpkins? Could you add up his?
Oh, didn't he included them all?
Oh, I didn't see the correct...
Did I just...
Jim, sit down.
Anderson.
Yeah, that was included.
And Anderson is five, yeah.
Oh, we got it.
Oh, you got it, okay.
Yeah, we're good now.
Okay.
So, so the way they're ranked right now is RAA. CPS, right?
Murray's in there.
Where's Murray?
It's at the, on the top, 13 on the top.
Okay.
And CPS.
CPS is your top three.
Eleven.
And what was the fourth, this list, if you can just open it up?
I don't know, JR Graves with number zero. Zero, oh, I think it's...
Cough is five and Alliance is five. I think if we all agree to, I mean, there's a big drop off after these three.
Yeah.
Stick with three.
So let's see if Betty's influence changes it, but I feel comfortable with those three.
I do, too.
Yeah.
They were in my top...
What three?
Oh, sorry, Ralph Anderson, Bill Murray, or Bob Murray, or...
Yeah.
And CPS.
There you go. Think we're there.
I told you guys this wouldn't take that long if we just...
I mean, I don't think you can make a wrong decision, like, all of these are professional companies, they all do, they're all priced about the same way, they're going to basically do the same thing. I mean, it's who you get, when you feel like you feel comfortable with.
It's the people.
They have a brochure. Murray has a brochure. And CPS. CPS has a brochure, okay?
Now, let me ask a question. Jeff, Jeff, so when we do choose one sometime today, you're going to write a letter to all of them, thank you very much?
Yeah.
Blah, blah, blah.
Say that again, Howie.
He's going to write a letter to the...
You know, your first part, when we choose one today.
We choose one today, we're choosing one today.
No, we're interviewing three.
We're going to interview three. Oh, I'm sorry. Well, we're choosing three today to interview. Write a letter to the six, thank you very much, blah, blah, blah.
Yes, yes.
Write a letter to three and we need to give them dates.
Yeah, and I think, you know, when it's convenient for you, and then you have them all, I think you might as well, you know, do them all at once.
Right.
And then, and, you know, give them 45 minutes, whatever time you think is appropriate.
Right.
That's it.
And do we also tell them in that letter that we want to deal with the principal, who's going to be running this? Because sometimes, that should be something you put in the letter, is that... Whoever comes and talks to us, that's the person we want representing.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, they've identified that person in each presentation, so that person ought to come.
And the format indicating that with 45 minutes, we need more than that, talk to each one of these guys?
I'm thinking they make their presentation for 30 to 40 minutes and then we leave 20 minutes for Q and A.
Yeah.
For us. Are we getting, we have the discretion to extend that if we want to.
Their presentation doesn't last that long, like 15, 20 minutes.
Yeah, I would think, but I think we need some time after each individual to have discussion about that individual.
Now, do you want to, but, okay, understand something, this is going to be done in open session because it's a, it's not like you're, all it is is just a consultant, it's like when we did the CATS group, okay? So you may want to wait until all three of them get completed and then talk about it at that point, take your notes. Unless you, I mean, you can run it any way you want.
But even after, we can't then go into a closed session to discuss which one we want to talk about?
No, because these are just consultants, guys, these are not, these are not employees.
No, but I think, I, I will... I just want to be sure, I will ask the firms to give us a few minutes to discuss, if they, they don't have to because obviously it's a public meeting.
Well, I think we, they will honor whatever you ask them, okay? So in other words, if you would, if you would like them, for example, if you want them to come in one at a time and not have the other firms in, because, you know, like we do with...
That would be appropriate.
And then, I think that's a good way to do it because nobody then gets an advantage because they hear some of the questions maybe beforehand. So we'll just politely ask them, look, it's an open meeting, but you guys, we would prefer that you, you know, wait outside, we'll take you one at a time, and then at that point, I think, if you want to, however you want to, and then, and then if we want to tell them, hey, look, you know, then the board's going to talk about it afterwards and we would prefer you not be there, we can do that also, you know?
I would prefer.
I mean, it's an open meeting, they can run the tape and see it later, but I mean, if it, if you, they're here to make you feel comfortable and if that makes you feel more comfortable in that context, even though it's an open meeting, we can do it.
And I would even take it a step further that, to advise them all right up front that, that we will inform the winner in writing at a later date. That way, the first company to go and pitch, they can go home afterwards. They don't feel like they have to sit around for two plus hours while everybody else is waiting to hear...
If you're going to handle it that way and not, yeah, and we'll let you know afterwards. Yeah. I'm... Go on to that.
We, I, we're going to be able to make a decision that night, I would hope.
We need to.
Okay. Since that being the case, could we then identify to them, we will identify who it is within about four or five, whatever the timeframe we figure, so that we can then set a time certain for when we're going to sit down with the individual? Now, I was going to start that with the criteria, but I think before we do that, don't we, we just have to accept their proposal? And that's it?
Well, we're going to have, we have a consulting service agreement that basically is going to, it's a form that we'll use, but it depends upon who you get, because some may want it, some are lump sums, some are, you know, a fee plus costs and so there may be some tweaking we have to do on that. But we can, we can get them engaged, okay? And then basically, that's, it's going to be up to you as to how, how you want to follow their proposal with respect to the first meeting and all that stuff.
Mr. President, I'm a fixed fee buyer and I would prefer, with consensus of the board, to ask each ultimate interview consultant, because some of them do have it fixed and some have a fee plus expenses. I prefer not to get into that arm wrestle, so I would be obliged to say, can you agree to a fixed fee price?
Okay, but here, here's the thing, they've made their proposals.
Yes.
When you interview them, if you want to make, ask that question and get an answer, that's the appropriate time to do that. They've made, it's, right now, we don't want to change their proposal.
No, no, at the interview period. That's what I'm referring to.
Absolutely.
Okay. Because one of the things that only one firm identified in their proposal was what our RFQ required, which was three or four meetings here at the board. And I'll, and I...
I'll have to look if you want. It was Murray.
Was it Murray? Everybody else said they would send this information or whatever, and I know they're going to be there for the criteria and certainly the questioning, but I guess as a board, we want to determine, do we want them to show up for a second and third board meeting for a progress, as the RFQ suggested?
I can't imagine going through this without having at least two or three in-person meetings with a recruiter.
Yeah, I agree, but therein is where the differential in some of the proposals. They had a fixed fee plus a cost, and then if you wanted the extra meetings, in one case it was $1,500, I don't remember which one it was without looking, but that would add another $3,000 to their proposal.
That was, so the $1,500 per trip, if you will? Above and beyond their proposal included, if I recall, two or three trips.
Two. That's my question.
Yeah, but what I liked about it was...
But I think you want to, look, familiarize yourself with the three that we're going to have and then ask those questions, Jim, and at that point, and then you can get your answers and how they're going to handle that, okay?
Yeah, and you might be concerned about, overly concerned about this, Jim, because if you take CPS for example, they gave us, they quoted us the professional fees and then they also quoted us what they're estimating the expenses to be, the reimbursable expenses, but they gave us a not to exceed total.
Correct.
So that, to me...
Is that Murray?
No, that was CPS.
Actually, the ones that provided separate professional fees and then expenses, I think they all said, they all said not to exceed the sum of the two.
Yeah, and even with, even with the variations of the fees and... Yeah, and even with, even with the variations of the fees and expenses, everybody was within, especially of these three, were probably within plus or minus two grand.
Generally based on ten percent of the salary. That's kinda the guideline for their, that's why these fees all kinda fell.
Well, yeah.
Fell in line, if you think about it.
With, with tax loads?
No, but they're, they're looking at the, you know, roughly, roughly, I'm just saying, that's a very, very rough, but that's why when you looked at them, you said, well, gee whiz, they're kinda all in the same ballpark. How did they, is that just, you know, well, it depends upon the position.
Director Martin. And I just add, uh, being through this one before, you'd be hard pressed to have to have a fourth meeting, it's less than a fifth meeting, you just don't need it. They're gonna do what you ask them to do, they're gonna tell you what they're gonna do, you tell them, and, and, they're not here for the individual interview.
You're only hiring a GM, guys, I mean, it's, I am, and I don't mean to minimize that, it's real important, but it's still, you know?
On some of them.
You'll never need a fourth meeting.
Well, that's the question I'm going to ask you then, is that last meeting was to do some kind of follow-up after the fellow is employed. Are you suggesting we may not want that or don't, you don't want that specifically?
Do a follow-up after employment?
Yeah, if you read the proposals, the firm said they would come back after the, uh.
There's really no reason for it.
Well, that's, that's what I'm asking, I don't know.
Don't look at the wall, don't look at the wall.
Did you guys do that at the city?
Don't look at the wall, don't look at the wall. Let's see if it changes anything.
So.
I read that and I'm like, why would you do that?
You can't look at the wall.
Can we, can we let the record reflect that Director Evans is joining us and if we can just fill you in if you would oblige, we've all ranked the, the nine bids that we received.
I looked at it.
It's fine, it's okay, and if you could, if you don't mind under, when you get settled in, under B for Betty, put, line your, uh, or list your.
Top five.
Your top five.
Top five. Sure, give me a second. I am so sorry.
Don't worry, traffic was rough out there.
No, and I just, just as I was pulling in, they said somebody hit something on three ninety-five and there's a big mess, and all of us in the mess and there were a lot of cars inside. Okay, let me see. How did we, oh, we wrote them out, I, I've got mine, I've got mine.
You got yours, that's all that matters.
Put them in order. I just wonder what you called them.
It could change. I don't think the top two. Actually, I don't even, I don't know, well, maybe because it's five pointers, yeah.
One thing to be thinking of is what's a good date to bring out, to bring the interviewees down for, on your calendars?
Didn't we have something tentative to set up? I thought we had a date.
We may have talked about it.
Yeah, but we can, we will leave here with a date.
We had, we had something tentative scheduled for April thirteenth at one. That was, we made it one because.
Uh, yeah, you're right, no. Does that still work for everybody, April thirteenth?
Uh, let me just be bottom proof here.
What day of the week is it?
It's a Wednesday.
It's a Wednesday.
April thirteenth.
I have a date somewhere.
So, one o'clock, two o'clock, three o'clock?
I had it as one, I, I vaguely remember talking about it, that since we had several of them.
Funny, I, uh.
That's a good date.
I can do one o'clock and I'll already be here, cause that's the same day as my chaperoning my daughter's.
Well, maybe that's why we've picked it, I don't know, I don't remember the discussion.
My daughter's classes touring the district that day, I'll be one of the chaperones.
So, one o'clock, two o'clock and three o'clock on thirteen.
Great.
Ann, could I please run to the bathroom now?
Sure.
To talk about it.
April what?
Thirteen.
Thirteen.
It's a Wednesday.
The thirteen consultant area, do you wanna?
I don't think it turns out anything. We had a time.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
CPS. Or I mean, uh, uh, Murray. Alliance only had five, she gave them an individual four, so that's.
Oh, that brings them up to nine.
Yeah.
There's not as technical, but, but you gotta weigh the other one, so.
And so, so Anderson had.
Five, he's, he's up to twenty, he's up to twenty. There's still. CPS.
We had a lot of. CPS was, he left, five and then they go to plus three more, so he's up to fourteen. And BHI is two more, and then he's over six. And COF had five, so he's over six as well. I don't think we changed anything. Twenty. Anderson is a twenty.
I mean, she gets two out of three, that's as good as anybody.
CPS jumps up ahead of her and going to.
Yeah.
Is Murray still in?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's still, it's still the same three and it's still a drop off from there.
Okay.
You didn't, I really have to change it, cause it was just about three.
So, what's your other, RAA, all right.
CPS.
Anderson, CPS and Murray, it's the same top three.
Anderson, oh, CPS, yeah.
That's pretty amazing, really.
Good.
Shouldn't have just asked me, cause that's what I had.
Easy peasy.
Yeah, you guys were talking to each other, I, I can see that.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. We weren't listening, though.
So, Craig, Craig got three out of three, that was good.
All mouth in the ears.
I got three out of three. Those were, those were Hal's top three?
Yep.
Wow, Hal.
Well, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Hope you, hope you did better than you did with the, uh.
You didn't get them in the right order, though, Hal.
Both Hal, awesome, well, it was, it's last chance for Murray.
Well, I just hope, uh, let's see.
Well, I got really good feedback, Rancho's using Anderson right now for assistant general manager recruitment and I, they asked me to sit on the interview panels and I was really impressed with the product that Anderson created and the candidates, they, they got two really good candidates out of seven of the interviews.
So, so Director Evans, just to bring it to speed, what, what we did by doing this is we, we assigned a, a weight, a weighted rating to each of the top five and basically each of our first choices got five points, our second choice we got four, three, two, one, and we added up all the points and we came up with the top three firms that, uh, we would like to bring back to, uh, for interviews.
Okay.
Before us are RAA, which I believe was your top firm.
Ralph.
Oh, the Anderson?
CPS and Murray, Bill or Bob?
Bob.
Bob.
There's none of Bill Murray somewhere out there, I think.
Is Murray the local one?
No.
No, the, the local one was, uh, didn't make it.
Yeah. Right, oh, Murray was the slick one. I mean, they were really slick, very nice. Yeah. Quite a variety in how they were presented, huh?
So, um, any, any concerns with the process, guys?
And let me, let me just go over that since Betty's here, number one, we wanna make sure that the principal in charge comes to the interview. It's, the interviews are gonna take place on, uh, at this point on April thirteenth, beginning at one o'clock. We're gonna have one firm at a time and I think in the letter, I ought to give them a time certain to show up and let them know that they, they can leave after they've, uh, made their presentation and, and talked to the board. If they got any questions, they can give me a call, you know, as far as encourage them to make sure that they understand that, once they're done, they're done. That way it'll give you guys an opportunity to discuss.
Uh, in, in previous RFQs, in the letter, I would suggest that you put that we don't want them to call us.
Right, okay, good idea.
And the only thing I would say, too, is just, you know, make sure they understand, we're not going to make a decision.
Oh, yeah, right.
That night, so there's really no reason for them to stay, unless they wanna sit in the lobby for two hours.
Well, I mean, you may make the decision that night, but we'll let them know, I'll, I'll make it clear that they'll be, uh.
It'll be announced.
You know, yeah, we'll let them know within twenty-four hours or something like that, the next day.
Okay.
Do you also, do you wanna let them know that one of three firms we're considering?
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Yeah, that is a good idea.
And are we telling the others we are not?
Of course.
Okay.
Of course.
Seems like.
It was a courtesy, thank, thanking them very much and, you know, appreciate their, their.
Anything else that we need to discuss about this matter before we adjourn, folks?
Did I miss anything important in Star's expectations?
We've spent most of this.
That was it?
That was it.
I'm so sorry.
Don't worry, you, you made it.
I left the water authority at three o'clock, you would think I'd have been here, wouldn't you?
Yeah, it's, uh, traffic was heavier than normal, I think, because some people have tomorrow awkward.
Is that what it is?
Yeah.
I did see.
It was a little bit longer.
A little messed up, but nothing.
Yeah, it was bad out there.
Tomorrow's Good Friday, so a lot of people have that.
The day off.
Yeah.
Oh, that is right, isn't it, holidayish?
Do you have everything?
I think, I think I got it.
Steps for us?
Yeah. I'll send those out tomorrow.
And we're gonna shoot for the thirteenth and you're gonna line those up, you have one firm coming around one.
Oh, that's a question I have, which firm you want to go first, which firm you want second?
Yeah, that's.
Okay.
The order we picked them?
Well, rank them one, two, three.
Oh, I was gonna say, I'd rather it just be random, so I'm not remembering if you were my number one or two, I'll remember anyway, but I don't want them to think, whatever.
Doesn't really matter.
It doesn't matter.
Anderson.
I mean, I mean, some of them might.
No opinion.
Having, having been in their position before making proposals, I mean, sometimes you wanna go first, sometimes you wanna go last.
Yeah, sometimes, yeah, it's hard to say, I mean, sometimes it's best, you know, it seems like.
You wanna be the last.
Yeah, the last is best.
Yeah, but it's after lunch, so we'll already be tired, so.
So, there's really no advantage either way. Okay, great, anything else?
That's it.
I think so. Okay, we're pushing to adjourn?
So moved.
Yeah.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Good job.